So.
So.
We don't have.
I bet.
Yes.
They're coming still with you.
Big man star.
This.
Yeah.
That is it.
Keep on it.
But that we communicated, but we don't know.
Right.
It's it.
It's true.
Yeah.
That was all short of stuff.
Okay.
Look.
Okay.
Just to go.
Yeah.
See the devil.
See the bird.
Comprehension.
That.
Here.
I think.
And.
Um.
What's what's the good third?
Yeah.
I hope.
That.
Nine.
Right.
Nine.
Well.
Hey, Dave.
Good day.
You can get the.
Sue.
I.
Do.
You.
Yeah.
You were.
I would say we could.
Because they're like turning around.
That's the showing.
It's only because.
Right.
So if anybody is.
You aren't.
That's.
And people cannot, you know, they do it.
Yeah.
You know, we.
Teach you.
But nobody's done it.
Yeah.
For half of that.
Yeah.
So I would just put an end sentence.
To have.
To do with us.
Probably not.
Okay. Probably say I wanted to say it was. But you want to say about the. I sorry.
Yes.
And. Success. There's some success.
All right, everybody. Good evening. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and call the, uh, August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the, uh, Planning Commission to Order. It's, uh, shortly after six P M. And, uh, first order of business, please, will be to, uh, do roll call. So starting at my far left, please.
Debbie Gordon.
Alex Waller.
Elizabeth Shin.
Jackie Edmondson.
And I'm Thomas O'Brien. Welcome. Second order of business is approval of the minutes from, uh, July ninth, twenty twenty four. Uh, has everybody had a chance to review them? And if so, does everybody have or does anybody have a motion for us to consider? All right, Commissioner Wallach moved to approve. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Commissioner Shin seconded. Uh, is there any discussion or questions about this? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Oppose like sign. That carries unanimously. It should be noted that Commissioners Cameron and Brown are not here yet at this time. Uh, next order of business is organizational items. Paul, do you have anything for us there?
I do. Yep. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Um, I want to give a quick summary of, uh, the actions the City Council has taken just to keep you in the loop, close the loop, so to say, on the things that you have seen. Um, the text amendment for community residences and recovery communities. Uh, you remember that this was before you all and a couple of different iterations. Um, the last one being uh, using the terms community residences and recovery communities, but this was initially the the drug treatment. Uh, text amendment. The City Council has last month adopted the text amendment uh, with most of the changes that you all made, um, when it was before before you all, um. Two changes were made. So they they supported taking out the buffers around parks. Um, and they supported the reduction in buffer requirements. If you remember, that was before you all proposed as seven and a half thousand feet, which is approximately approximately a mile and a half, uh, was reduced uh, by you all to a half mile. Um, the City Council has increased this for recovery communities only to one mile. Yeah, so recovery communities are the larger facilities. So we did a two-tier buffering system where the smaller ones have a half-mile buffer, the larger ones a mile buffer. And then for school buffers, the same thing, no change from what you all had recommended for the the community residences. But for the recovery communities, that was increased to two thousand feet. So um, the moratorium expires tonight, so that was in place for approximately a year and a half, or expires tonight. So we expect the first applications to come in shortly. Any any questions about this? This item?
Are we expecting this to, uh, survive scrutiny the way it's written? Uh, everything looks pretty, pretty high and tight as far as, uh, what the state might want to see and how we're regulating this?
Yes, we had a attorney review this, external attorney review this. And he's satisfied, satisfied with it.
Great.
And then I wanna, uh, include a second item. Um, we started the comprehensive planning process in, uh, a big way, uh, over the last couple of weeks. The first public hearing here, uh, on July twenty second at the City Council meeting to get that process started. Um, comprehensive plan is sort of the big picture document that gives the direction, uh, for the city for um, for planning and for, uh, construction development for the next twenty years. So we're redoing uh, that comprehensive plan. And then we're also using that opportunity to, uh, create an entire new unified development ordinance. So what this is, is a combined document that will replace the sign code, the zoning ordinance, the land development regulations, the building regulations, and tie all of it into one, uh, document. So this is uh, a really large undertaking. Um, the main zoning ordinance still stems from the nineteen sixties, is based on the DeKalb County document, uh, that was sort of iterated upon sort of over the over the decades, and this will be a clean cut with a new document. So we are very excited about this, but also a bit in awe on the workload sort of that will be um, required sort of for that. I have the timeline down there um, where it's, um, comprehensive plan adoption is planned in the summer of of twenty twenty five or even a bit earlier than that. And then work on the development.
What's happening?
What happened? Will happen in, uh, in in parallel and will take another year. So towards the the second half of twenty twenty six, that's that's the current plans. Um, both items will come before you all for Planning Commission review. Um, but we would also like to hear from you all. Prior to that, uh, two of you, Elizabeth and Scott, are on the steering committee for this undertaking. Um, we also have a survey out right now. The link is here. We'll send it around tomorrow as well. And it's pretty easy to find on our website. Um, but there's a big survey open, and that's a first contact point for most residents, but we want to hear what they think works in the city, what what doesn't work, what they would like to see more of, what they would like to see change, what they would like to stay the same, pretty much. Um, please share this in your networks as well. We want to hear from as many people as possible to make sure that we have something that that represents the community. And then I want to advertise the second item down here, um, on September tenth, we have a public workshop, and this will be uh, again, sort of to get a sense for what the community appreciates, um, in in Dunwoody and what they would like to see changed. So that's, uh, in-person event. We're doing it in perimeter center in the Park Place Shopping Center. That's where Alon used to be. We're taking advantage of a vacancy down there, and we have a beautiful, the old Ellen Admins, uh, suite that overlooks the interior courtyard that's recently renovated. So we have a pretty nice, um, venue for this. That's um, airy and beautiful in a way that our city hall building um, feels in its best moments too. Um, but but this one is sort of so it's it's outside of City Hall to ideally get um, yeah, just a cross-section of people engaged with this. Please also, please come share it with your networks. Um, again, the more people, the better. Uh, any questions about the the process here? Perfect. Thank you all.
All right, at this time, I don't believe we have any unfinished business, so we will, uh, move forward to new business. Uh, that would be, uh, slut twenty-four dash zero one. Uh, Allegra, what do you have for us?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. Um, so we are talking about a proposed Starbucks drive-through at one forty Perimeter Center West. So it's where the yellow star on this aerial image would be. So in the shop, in the shops to the left are like the Academy Sports and, um, the Pet Smart. And then the Total Wine and More is, um, at the southern edge of the parcel, just to orient everyone, um, across the street to the east is Ashford Lane, and then to the south is the High Street redevelopment. Um, so the property is a little over fifteen acres. It's known as Perimeter Square, and it was built in nineteen ninety four, following a nineteen ninety three rezoning from O I to C one. C one is our local commercial district, and that's still what the property is owned today. Um, there's a handful of tenants in it, some of the ones I already mentioned. Um, and they and Starbucks is proposing to install a drive-through facility there. So it would be an out parcel along the eastern edge of the parking lot. So you can see the Starbucks lease area, um, in the, uh, site plan to the right. And in October twenty twenty three, the City of Dunwoody adopted an ordinance requiring new drive-through facilities to get a special land use permit. Um, those of you who were on the Planning Commission last year might remember that text amendment coming before you all. Um, so that's why they're, that's why they needed to apply for a special land use permit, and this is our first, um, case coming, uh, after that new text amendment. Um, the drive-through is proposed on a property that's zone C one. Um, a drive-through is allowed within that zoning district, provided they get a special land use permit. So the proposed site area is a little under an acre, um, and it'll result in a net removal of seventy-seven existing parking spaces compared to the current conditions, since they're building over existing parking. Um, so the building you can see in the approximate middle of the site plan here, that's, um, three thousand square feet. It's one story. Um, and then to the rear of the building is a single drive-through lane with ten stacking spaces. Um, and the red dotted lines that cut through approximately the sort of right third of the site plan. Um, those sort of demarcate where the martyr tunnel is, and so above that is a martyr easement. Um, you are not allowed to construct structures on top of the martyr line, um, parking and sort of associated improvements of that nature are allowed. Um, so that's the reason why they've, uh, located the Starbucks back quite a ways from the road. Um, and the project will include two pedestrian walkways. Um, and you can see the first one is at the northern edge of the lease line. Um, that one's ADA compliant, and the second one, um, comes from around the corner here at the curb cut and transitions over here. So the ADA compliant walkway will extend in an existing landscape island towards the shopping center. Um, and then the existing trees in the landscape island will be replanted in conjunction with the landscape plan shown to the right. These are the proposed elevations facing Perimeter Center West. Um, the facade materials will be primarily brick and glass. So one of the overarching goals of the comprehensive plan is to promote connectivity and choice for all modes of travel. Um, the project is only technically required to provide one pedestrian paths, but, um, it through working with the city, they've chosen to provide two. Um, and so that accommodates multiple modes of transportation for the customers and will improve walkability for the site as a whole, since that pedestrian path is going to continue all the way into the rest of the shopping center, so providing that pedestrian connection all the way from Perimeter Center West to the shops there, and that currently doesn't exist, um, which mitigates any negative impacts from increased car presence. Um, staff is also particularly supportive of the reduction in surface parking for the site as a whole. Building on top of existing impervious surface is a more sustainable form of development, and the comp plan highlights the conversion of surface parking to other land uses as a redevelopment strategy, particularly in Perimeter Center. Additionally, the shopping center currently has no restaurants, so adding Starbucks would diversify the current land uses present in the site. The new proposed drive-through complies with all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Um, and there's adequate land area for the proposed use, especially given the large amount of off-street parking in the area, or generally. So the proposed use is fairly low impact, not anticipating any excessive noise, smoke, that type of thing. Um, will operate in sort of a standard way for a restaurant and for a shopping center. A restaurant is a typical tenant in a shopping center. And staff doesn't anticipate any adverse impacts on any adjoining land use. The proposed drive-through has adequate stacking distance to provide issues in traffic flow in the area. In addition to meeting the city's stacking requirements, the restaurant is situated behind a long driveway, providing additional queuing area for any busy periods. Parking at the overall shopping center is generally sparsely utilized, supporting the elimination of the seventy-seven parking spaces. And the drive-through will make use of the current needs of ingress and egress, so no additional curb cut is required. Um, and those are wide enough to allow emergency vehicle access, and the proposed dumpster, um, is adequate for refuse purposes. The proposed one-story restaurant is in line with the scale of other buildings in the area. Um, it won't create any negative shadow impact on any adjoining law or building. Um, and lastly, the subject site is not historically significant. Staff is not aware of any archaeological resources. So, um, based on those reasons, staff is recommending approval of the special land use permit request, and we have four conditions on the screen, so I'll so I'll go through each of them briefly. So the first condition is, um, conditioning them to the site plan and the elevations, which is our standard condition for these types of things. The second condition, um, is, uh, highlighting the pedestrian improvements specifically, um, and conditioning them to those. The third one is, um, a right-of-way condition. We worded it fairly broadly because currently the right-of-way isn't finalized, and the applicant is still in conversations with the Public Works Department. And then lastly, we're requesting that they put a vent, uh, excuse me, one window on the north facade of the proposed building. Um, that includes their back of house, and then there's an office there, and we've, uh, worked with the architect to find a good location for that proposed window. That's all I have for you, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are are we gonna hear from the, uh, applicant at this time? Wonderful.
Good evening. I'm Danny Blumenthal with Gaskins LaCra, twelve sixty-six Patter Springs Road in Marietta, Georgia. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to to present to you this evening. Um, so I'm not gonna, you know, I'll try to keep it short because Allegra was was pretty in-depth with, uh, her description of our request, but in short, uh, my client Starbucks Coffee is seeking a special land use permit um, to offer a drive-through facility. Um, it's, uh, required by Code Section twenty-seven dash seventy-two. Property is located in the perimeter center. Uh, it's now a parking lot, but I think this would be an appropriate reuse of, um, of that space. Currently is home to a few retail locations like Haverty's Furniture and Academy Sports. So, uh, i- if anything, bringing the additional cars over there would actually, uh, potentially, you know, support the businesses that are there as opposed to track what's, uh, what's existing in that shopping center. It's currently zone C one commercial, so the coffee shop, uh, you know, quick service restaurant would be permitted by right in that area, but because we're requesting the, um, drive-through, that's why we're here this evening with this request. Um, so yeah, I just ask that you please accept or, you know, request, uh, recommend approval of this request. I think we had a few questions or, you know, conversations we were hoping to have on the the right-of-way dedication that was proposed condition, um, number three, I believe. Um, but beyond that, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. We have the architect and the project engineer here as well, if you have any questions specific to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Allegra, I I have one question before we start kind of putting it to us for for questions and discussion. Uh, the packet that was published to us appears to have there seems to be a discrepancy between the packet that was issued to us and the what I'm seeing on the screen here, in particular with regard to item three. Uh, go, please go back to the page you're on. Yeah. Item three, uh, and it's probably not a big deal, but the parking area shall not be striped except for the required ADA space. That's not in my packet.
Yeah, I think that was accidentally carried over from something else, so please disregard apologies for that.
So in your presentation, we should, we should strike what's in your presentation because what's in our packet is the true and correct?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Uh, at this time, I think it's, uh, I want to go ahead and invite anybody who's here to speak for this project up. We're gonna do ten minutes for, ten minutes against, and then we'll open it up to, uh, additional questions and discussions. Is there anybody here, uh, to speak as a proponent to this project? All right. Seeing none at this time, is there anybody here to speak as an opponent to this project? All right, with that said, I think we'll go ahead and open this up to, uh, commission comment and discussion. Uh, let's go ahead and start to my right with Commissioner Edmondson, please.
Great, thanks so much. Um, I just got a couple of questions. Um, can you walk me through, um, Allegra, possibly you can do this. Where exactly the drive-through is in the stacking lane, um, and then which direction it goes?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So, um, folks would come in at the curb cut here and cut around and enter over here. Are you able to see my cursor?
Yeah.
Um, and then they would move in a clockwise motion, um, around here to the back of the building where the, um, drive-through window would be, and then exit out of here.
Okay, thank you. That helps. Um, and I guess my uh, the other question that I had was the light that's at the intersection with Perimeter Center Way. Right? So, um, yeah, down right there. Um, is it turn left and go straight or go right? Like, what are the turning lanes like there? Because?
Yeah, there's a right-turn-only lane here.
Okay.
And then I'm not sure about the traffic signal.
Yeah, the only reason I'm asking especially for, um, like entering or exiting that area is I kind of remember it being a little awkward. And so I I was just trying to, I don't know if anyone remembers, but like when I go over there, it feels a little awkward, so I'm just wondering if there's anything that needs to be improved there, that light for better traffic flow. Um, which is where the question's coming from.
Yeah, I am not sure what the traffic signals are like, um, in that in that area. I do know that the curb cut is fairly wide. I'm not sure if that contributes to to any of the things you're talking about.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would just be interesting to understand that because I think there's kind of like a little, um, I don't know what it's called. Yeah, they drive over the island to get in there, and so if we're directing more people to go in there, I just think we might have to look at the actual entrance to the, to the entire thing.
And we're always doing that, um, as part of the, uh, land disturbance permit process. Then that gets reviewed by the Public Works Department. If there's adjustments that need to be made as part of the traffic signals.
Okay.
They're always looking at that as.
And like that little island and stuff would be included in that?
So that so I think the proposal will not include any major revisions, uh, to the infrastructure there or like any um, but with the the real study of that will happen as part of the the permitting process. Um, I wouldn't bank on sort of major revisions as as part of it, but we'll certainly look at the 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 light timing, the the signal timing and so forth.
Okay, um, okay, I think my major concern isn't so much the signal timing, but actually the exit and entrance with the weird island that's there. Um, let's see. That is all I had for now. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll add to start on Commissioner Edmondson's comment. The sidewalk that's there is already cracked. You can already tell that there's vehicles driving over that to make that turn. And I bet to the curb on that island is a little busted as well. Um, so I don't know if there needs to be like some auto turn or something like turning movements done there. Um, especially I know more people will be making that right or left or straight into there. Um, and yeah, it is a little tight, whether that's the radius or the lane width or something like that. Um, so I get you want people to exit and enter slowly, but um, some people are probably trying to just fit in that gap on that flashing yellow. Um, I guess I will start with questions for the applicant. Um, I noticed in the packet that part of the process is you have to do public engagement, like a public meeting, and that you sent out letters, and you advertise in the Dunwoody newspaper. And you sent letters out to a thousand-foot radius surrounding this area, which is primarily um, commercial spaces, very limited residential. And in that, uh, public meeting that you had back in May, you had zero people attend. Um, I just want to put that on the record that, um, talking to staff using that same process in other areas of Dunwoody is a little bit more effective because people read the newspaper. So, um, having zero people attend this meeting is kind of disappointing. Um, my first question is then about the martyr easement. Is that something that the, um, Starbucks has already gotten or signed an agreement or is working through that process?
My name's Michael Toothacre. I'm with Gaskins LaCra. I'm the project engineer for, uh, for the Starbucks here. So the martyr easement is in existing conditions that that's there today as a part of the shopping center. Um, the the tunnel that runs from the station there behind Perimeter Mall and then leaves exiting south, and it runs directly under this and actually runs in between the, uh, the Total Wine Building and the building adjacent to it. So it's, it's nothing that we have to do, like there's nothing. So it's, it's nothing that we have to do, like there's nothing we have to do to get the easement. It's there, we have to work around it.
Right, yeah, more like a construction agreement, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, exactly. And we have, we've, we've done plans, we've submitted plans to MARTA. Coordinated with MARTA, MARTA's on board with it. They have no problems with how it's laid out. The architect had to put together some, some structural loading plans just to show there were no adverse, you know, impacts to the, to the tunnels. MARTA's reviewing that currently. We haven't heard back from them yet, but we didn't see any issues with it from a loading standpoint. We just need MARTA to to concur. Um, but yeah, the the MARTA tunnel was a, or easement was a big issue for us because. Initially, we looked, we started looking at this almost two years ago before the slot process was even a, a thing. And the comment came up initially, then let's put, push the building up on the road. And we started looking at that. That's when we discovered the MARTA easement. MARTA told us, no, you can't put a building on it. And so that's what kind of, that's what really nailed down how the site needed to lay out here and pushing the building back.
And is that existing parking part of the parking for your site or is that just?
Yeah, so the parking.
I mean, that's not accounted for in the parking in your site.
Parking out here along the edge is existing to remain. Um, you know, the, basically everything that's shown kind of grayscale scaled back is existing out there today to remain. And everything shown in black is what we're proposing.
Okay. Um. I guess one of my questions then, uh, with the walkway that's coming up, the driveway, the existing driveway from the signal. Uh, if there's a possibility to potentially amend condition two to remove those final two parking spaces. And bring that crosswalk to be more perpendicular instead of like diagonal. Um. That, that's a better like pedestrian walkway design rather than, right now you're dumping people and. Not a great spot for cars to see them. And so. Knowing that we can't build anything there and that parking is. It it obviously will help out the Starbucks, but it's otherwise not really gonna be used for anything. So what could go there? Like green space or something like that? I I don't know, but um, it's private property, so.
The, the only thought I have to that is I do know that this area in here is, is steep. And so I don't know if shortening that run is gonna make it like going perpendicular across the sidewalk, if it's gonna make that run steeper. Um, that's not, so originally we didn't have this southern connection. We had the northern one for our ADA. And then we met with Paul and Allegra and staff. And it was recommended that that we add the second. And so we did with the knowing, you know, agreement that it wouldn't be the ADA connection. So I don't know if the steepness would be an issue, but I know at some point it becomes an undesirable condition.
Right.
But I mean, it's something we can look at for sure.
Yeah, I would assume a lot of the steepness is coming up that driveway and not necessarily across two parking spaces.
Well, so part of the steepness comes in from the fact that that whole parking lot today slopes from the. The buildings that anchor the back of it to the front. And when we come in with the building, we're basically taking a section of it and flattening it out. And so. It steepens up kind of what's happening across this front drive and it steepens up a little bit what's happening back here in order to kind of create a flat. Pad for it all to sit on. That's really what.
Yeah.
That's what causes the, the steepness.
I don't know how much the cross slope changes if you do it diagonally crossing or straight across. So that was just one of my comments.
Okay.
Um. And uh, there was no traffic study then done for this project? It wasn't required, I guess, per the city?
Traffic study.
Okay.
Typically Starbucks doesn't trigger traffic requirements as a kind of their standalone. Um, and we've done, myself, the architect, we've done hundreds of these things across the southeast. And the only time we ever really see a, a traffic study come into play is if it's part of a larger new development that's being planned.
Okay. Um, and I didn't see in the packet, and this might be something done like later in the process for any like stormwater detention plans. Is there a plan to have detention on site? And if so, where?
There is. So we've actually been through two rounds of city comments. We, I guess we kind of did the process backwards. We did a full set of civil plans submitted for permit. Um, we've actually gone all the way through permitting and our one remaining comment is to get through the slot process. So yes, we do have. Uh, a stormwater system underground back here under the parking lot. It's been designed, it's been reviewed. Um, all comments have been addressed by. By staff.
Okay. Um, and I just wanted to point out too, for people who might not be able to see it on this smaller graphic. Uh, per Commissioner Edmondson's comment, that it is one way in, one way out for the drive-through. Um, and like the parking spaces that are in there, but there is like one exit on the left-hand side. And I would assume that's for dumpster access. No, sorry, on the left side of your site. Um.
So, so the thought is you enter the site, right? You traverse along the southern edge here. You turn up into the site like basically anyone parking or servicing anything in the rear pulls in here. The garbage truck, for instance, would pull in, get the garbage back up and then they would turn down kind of this middle. Middle lane here that's constructed of heavy-duty pavement and then make the, turn out and then exit back.
Okay, in that case, then the site design needs to change because the driveway that you have on your left-hand side of your site. Is an e- ingress and egress and then therefore should only be entering.
These are two egress lines. This is the.
No, 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 on the left-hand side.
This uh, over here?
Yes.
That's in.
The curb cut that's right next to your mouse. You have both entering and exiting traffic there and that the only exiting traffic I could configure of based on that. Flow you just mentioned is that dumpster truck is pulling in, backing out and then pulling out.
We saw, we saw the exit there as like an escape. If someone mistakenly pulled in here, they could hang a left and then keep heading back towards the shopping center. And then someone sitting here could turn into the drive-through or they could pull straight in and park.
Yeah, that's just a little confusing. Um, I know parking lot probably a little chaotic once this gets built anyway, so. Um.
So you're saying it should be in like.
Like inter only, yeah. Cause if, if they pull in and they go, oh no, I don't want to wait, they can always do what you mentioned of that. Enter loop instead. Um, it doesn't really make sense to enter then immediately exit.
I guess we can review that with uh, with Michael Smith at Public Works and go off of recommendations.
Okay. Um. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Um, I guess first I would ask, um. What do you guys propose to do for loading and uh, unloading? Do you have a loading zone proposed?
I mean, typically all loading is done off hours. Um, and and the thought is. Again, the truck would pull in and it's not one of these large, you know, WB sixty-sevens. It's a, it's a smaller truck that does the deliveries. And they could, they could park up here or in this lane and and do the deliveries. Um, I wish Starbucks representative was here. I can't speak on the, the frequency of deliveries and that sort of thing, but. It's never, you know, ninety percent of the, the sites we design, Starbucks doesn't provide a, like a designated. Delivery or loading space. It's just always within the parking lot. Which makes me assume that they don't have issues, but. Cause they, they tell us about everything else if there's an issue.
And then it would enter, you know, if you had somebody parking, would it be? I guess where you see the cars queued up for the drive-through and then they would go in through the drive-through side of the building? Does that?
Oh, if you're parked back here, how do you get in? So there, there's two options.
For the, yeah, for the loading.
For the loading. So the loading would come in on the north side of the building back here.
Okay.
Um, and so another thing that Starbucks makes us do is provide like a, a striped path. Pedestrian path from the rear of the, the building, kind of the, the back portion of the building is the, like the back of house. Um, they make you provide a path from the back of house down all the way to the dumpster. And so typically the loading would occur in the area of the dumpster and the guy with the hand trucks would deliver stuff on this same path back up to the back of house.
Okay. Um, I think it'd be good to just indicate that on the site plan if nothing else. Um, sounds like there's. Probably wouldn't be an issue, but just to avoid confusion, I'm sure this question will probably come up with um. Uh, with city councils, so um, just, just to make it clear where, where it's proposed to do that, I think would be advisable. Um, I, I guess just kind of building off of what um, Elizabeth was saying. I. I have a little bit of concern about the circulation. I, I guess, I guess it would all work, but. With the dumpster being where it is and the circulation and then the queuing. I just wonder if you guys would be better suited to have, you know, where it kind of curls back into the south, that queuing lane, like. Was there any consideration to kind of making that kind of more straight across for additional queuing and a little less. Interaction with the parking spaces that are kind of in that interior within that queuing area?
So are you talking here, bringing this straight across for queuing?
Uh, more like behind it. Um, so kind of taking it further back to the, I guess it's the west.
I don't quite understand.
Well, you've got kind of the horseshoe, right?
Correct.
So instead of the horseshoe, taking it further back, well, for, from your perspective, this way to the west. Just a straight, straight back.
Wha- wha- what exactly am I taking back to the west?
Your queue. So instead of, all right, if you come into the.
She would be like an L-shaped.
Correct. Have, was that considered? Um, and.
It, I mean, it's considered, but the, the issue there is there's still buildings back there behind us, right? There's a, I think it's a Havertys or a. A sporting goods store that's back there.
Sure.
And they want their designated parking field for a certain depth in front of them.
Right.
So then having the drive-through run up that way then interferes with their operations. It's, it's, it's how they look at it.
Yeah. Well, I, I would not propose to take it any further back to, than to the west where those uh, islands are. Where you have that kind of main drive aisle. More curiosity, how, I mean, I, I guess what, what expectation do you have in terms of the amount of vehicles that you would get? Uh, at your crunch time in a queue? Yeah.
Twelve, I mean, t- typically twelve to maybe fifteen, which fifteen would put it, you know, back here at the entrance.
Right. So if that happened, are there gonna be conflicts with people getting in and out of the site?
No, there would not be conflicts exiting the site.
Well, getting into the site, I suppose.
I mean, you're getting into the queue. I mean, the thought process is typically if you're coming to go inside, you're gonna park in these spaces in the front, like that's. I mean, that's, that's kind of what.
So you would, so people would not use that interior lot that's within.
The interior lot would be used for employees and I mean, it's also additional parking.
Yeah.
But, but, I mean, the peak time is for, you know, an hour, maybe two hours in the morning.
Yeah.
Um. You know, I know Starbucks runs this through all kind of performance standards and their internal procedures and they've killed sites before. Because the drive-through was gonna choke out operations and they haven't done that for this site over the last year and a half. So my, my assumption is that they don't see that being an issue.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I can't speak for what the programs are they running through, but.
And I, I don't wanna nitpick you to death. I just, I, I see it and, you know, what Elizabeth was saying. I just see a lot of things going on in a small amount of space. And if you kind of broaden that horseshoe out a little further. I just feel like you might have a little more room to operate without potential conflicts. Um.
I mean, it also comes down to, you know, land, land cost, all that sort of thing. There's a happy.
Oh, sure, well.
There's a happy point where a deal works financially and all that sort of.
Understood. I mean, I'm, I'm not proposing to take out any buil- buildings, just simply existing parking spaces. And more of a reorientation. Um. Um, in terms of the uh, the MARTA easement, I think that's unfortunate that we're not able to have a um. A building that's up close to the street, cause I think that would be perfect for this area. Um, I do, I do appreciate that you guys have the two kind of pedestrian access points at the north and the south. Um, I guess, building off the previous comment about that diagonal uh, crosswalk, I would just maybe reiterate. Taking a look at making it more perpendicular or. Also can, maybe a consideration of just having something that's a little more direct out to the street. Instead of taking it all the way around that um, existing entrance. I don't know if that was something that was looked at.
It, it, it was looked at, again, it's, it's not so.
It's a great thing?
It is, and it's not even really on our site. It's on the backside of this curb down to the sidewalk.
Okay.
There's a, there's a great change. And in addition, there's a, just off the backside of this curb, there's a lot of MARTA infrastructure. There's actually this, this box right here is a vault. It's an emergency escape vault from the tunnel.
I got you.
Surface level. So we're really handicapped on what we can do right here on the backside of this curb.
All right, so you did look at it. It's just a matter of kind of too many obstacles and great issues.
Realize that, you know, the connection up here is not the most direct. We understood that. It was, that was what would work from an ADA standpoint.
Yeah. Okay. All right, um, like, like I said, I don't wanna nitpick you to death. I think overall this is. Generally fine. It makes sense. The location's good. Uh, like I said, just kind of um. Some circulation issues, cause there's just seems to be a lot of uh, mixing in one small area. And so just considerations of maybe how to reduce some of the conflict points.
And, and one other thing, I guess, to, to that statement real quick too, is the entrance back here is actually wide enough for, for two lanes. And, and I can stripe it that way if need be on the plan. But you could have cars, you know, on the left-hand side stacked up in the drive-through and a car could sneak in on the right side and get into the parking lot.
Yeah, that could be a solution. All right, that's all for me.
Um, circulation was also a concern of mine, looking in the lower right corner where they're going in and out. Nope, over to the, my right entrance from the street.
Oh, right in here.
Yeah, the two, the in and out coming from the, basically the excess driveway and then in and out coming from the. Um. The drive-through, is that gonna be wide enough to accommodate? Like turn, all of those turns there?
Width here?
Yeah.
So this island, I mean, this is all existing conditions in two lanes and it functions today. Um, I mean.
So, the, the island is there, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And.
And we've maintained a minimum of twenty-four foot wide driveway everywhere else, which is standard two-way drive with.
And is the darker black just above those two arrows? Is that a crosswalk?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there gonna be any integration with the walking from? The Starbucks to access the stores on the other side of that parking lot? I mean, I know it's a long way.
So that's part of the, the northern access as well. So this ADA access from the right-of-way. Originally came and just went to the, to the Starbucks building. And again, working with staff through rounds of comments, we now extend that connection all the way back. Um, to the ADA spaces here and these ADA spaces actually serve the, the anchor shopping center buildings.
It's like AT&T's right on that corner.
Um, no, behind us is um. It's Academy Sports or Dick's Sporting Goods. It's one of those and there's a furniture store that's a part of it.
Okay, so it's not all on the like central parkway end. Right? So the, the top end of this, does that come through the center of the parking lot?
I think this, this may show it a little better. So the, this is the access point here that we're talking about, the, the walk that goes back.
Okay.
And thi- this is the, the majority of the buildings down here in this corner. That's the total line. Then I think right here is the AT&T building up.
Yeah, it's all the way at the top of this.
Oh, up here, yeah. I'm not sure what this is, but the, the two buildings down here on, they're not, I mean, they're part of the shopping center, they're not the, the major. Uh, anchors, but I know, I think this tenant here. uh, anchors. But I know, I think this tenant here may be the Academy Sports. And I think this is a, a uh, furniture store. But yeah, we, we worked with staff and and created this connection.
It's gonna go all the way to the stores.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So part of it's existing. Once you get to the handicap spaces right here, there's an existing striped connection up to the sidewalk. We're just providing a connection from the road back to that.
Okay, those were, those are my only questions. Thank you.
I just have one clarification. What does that mean stacking spaces?
Stacking is the number of cars that can fit in the drive-through lane.
Okay, like.
Like a queue, the drive-through queue, the drive-through stack, which is what they're referring to.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, ha- have there been any concerns expressed by the uh, tenants that are occupying that uh, that space as of yet?
Not to my knowledge. Um, I haven't had any of the dealings with the the landlord. So this is proposed to be a lease. It's not a, we're not creating a new parcel. It's a lease.
Okay.
And Starbucks's real estate manager has been handling all the coordination with the existing shopping center owner. And I'm not aware of any conflicts, but that doesn't mean that there aren't any. I mean, everybody could be happy with it or somebody could be mad. I don't know.
No voices have been heard by any parties on your own side yet then.
Not, not that we've heard at all.
Okay. The, the window in the back on the north facade, is that a, is that an easy give? Is that uh, is that something that's uh, problematic, concerning, or let's hear about it?
I'll let the architect speak to that one.
Okay.
Everyone, um, have you guys seen here? Um, I've been working with this project since the kind of initial steps. The reason we initially didn't propose that window is because we do have our operations essentially um, all along this back area. But we have placed a partner as area and manager's area, so we will be able to provide a um, window in that section without compromising operations of the space.
Okay, so the, no, no issues when I'm here. Okay. Um, kind of getting back to the site plan, what sort of attempts, and I just, I can't see it here and I don't know if it's been discussed. What sort of attempts are there to blind? Well, two questions. When we're talking about the dumpster area, I see almost kind of two squares, one that appears as part of the island and then one that extends into the area where folks will be driving. Is that a door path there or what, what is that?
So the, the, the main square kind of here to the northern rectangle, that's the actual enclosure itself where the bins will sit and it'll be a, you know, brick and mortar enclosure to match the building. The rectangle out front is just an extension of like the concrete pad or apron that the, the truck will pull up onto. So it's, we're showing just the difference in kind of this, this stippled hatch here is a heavy-duty asphalt. And then this kind of southern rectangle is, is heavy-duty concrete for the service of the dumpsters that we're showing there.
Three sides of the uh, of the, the dumpsters will be blinded?
Yes, sir. And then what have gates as well on the front.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think that'll do it for my questions. Thank you. All right, uh, at this point, I think everybody's asked questions. Are there any follow-up questions or is there any discussion? Or uh, in the alternative, if we're ready to to form a motion, we'd hear that as well. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
A quick clarification. You, you mentioned that um, condition earlier that there was that discrepancy between what's in our packet and what was in the presentation. Could could you mention that again? Because I didn't quite follow that.
The, the packet, if you're reading our packet, it's correct. The presentation in the, or the, the uh, uh, stipulation in the presentation had an extra sentence about painting parking spots, which is not applicable here. So what you're reading in the packet that was sent out and probably published as well is square. What we saw briefly in that was not.
Okay, so then no need for anything to include in a, in a motion to address that because it's correct in the packet, correct?
That's my understanding.
Uh, I would say, uh, just to make sure that there's no ambiguity, just say, if you want that condition to be included, just uh, say, say it kind of into the microphone that you want the uh, conditions as provided in the package.
Okay. Fair enough. All right. So any, any additional questions, any discussion that we want to have amongst ourselves or is somebody ready to form a motion? You know, the, the, the item one is pretty standard fare, the pedestrian improvements are that's fairly standard fare as well. Uh, the right-of-way dedication we've heard all about as well as the window. Is there anything anybody else feels compelled to add or are we ready to uh, or or strike for that matter? Or is there uh, are we, we ready to to push forward?
Did you want to have them look at the intersection or is that, they're not, that's like out of their scope? Yeah, that, that isn't it Public Works that needs to look at the intersection or we can add that as a condition?
Yes, we'll, we will gladly take a look at the intersection and just, you know, ensure that it functions. You know, appropriately. Um, and I guess while I'm up here, I, I guess I would like a little clarification on condition three. Well, you know, when you guys start to talk about it, um, just the, the kind of the way it's written with the dedication, I understand the dedication and asking um, for the dedication. I think the thing that, that Starbucks has been kind of hung up on is the, the applicable right-of-way improvements and and kind of showing that and having that contingent upon our LDP. Um, just trying to understand what's being asked there. Because there's a lot of frontage for the whole shopping center. We're a small piece and I know, you know, asking Starbucks to make improvements along the entire shopping center frontage um, is, is a pretty big ask and and quickly kills um, construction budgets and and makes projects undoable. Um, so just, just kind of clarification there on what the exact ask is um, moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Pa- Paul, my understanding is the LDP would issue specifically on the picture that we're looking at now, not the entire complex, but rather rather the, the, the diagrams that we've been shown. Or can you clarify that?
So, so code is that, that's why we brought it up early with the, with the applicant. Um, code technically requires a new building is built on a parcel. Entire thing is, is one side, so requires right-of-way improvements all the way around. Like we've historically not requested this, you know, that, that's because it is for a small project like this. It's a tremendous burden, kind of like how uh, Michael said, but, but we want this um, for the applicant to talk with the public works department, come up with something that's shared. Um, that typically happens at the LDP stage, but because here the right-of-way improvements would partially impact the parking too. So we want to get this process going early on to make sure that there's no um, obstacles in the way.
So if we approve this as it's written and it's viewed by applicant as over-restricted, even if it passes us, that could be over-restricted. If it passes us, it could still be within the purview of the public works director and the applicant to, to settle this in compliance with, in compliance with REG and everything else.
Yeah, we sometimes if we, if we request something specific or if we ask for something specific, you'll see a lot more specificity in this condition. This is um, worded to allow both parties to continue talking. They have been talking. There's no, there's no solution yet. We want this to continue so that at city council, we have uh, something that will, that everybody can live with.
Okay, so this is, we're, if we approve this as it's written, we're almost leaving it as an outstanding issue.
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And Paul, to be clear, the right-of-way dedication is requested at Public Works and in the perimeter center area, that's for like the streetscape. There's no planned capital improvement project.
No, there, there's, there's nothing in the plans right now, but we've adopted um, like ten years ago when we did the perimeter center overlay, we adopted the streetscape and and there's the I think it's additional nineteen feet that that would be required to implement that street cape at some point in the future.
Okay, team, do we have uh, somebody who would care to form a motion?
I'll give it a go.
Wonderful, Commissioner Edmondson.
All right, um, I'd like to um, form a motion to approve um, SLUP twenty-four oh one for one forty perimeter center west, um, as written with staff recommendations and conditions with the stipulation that um, Gaskins La Crawl will um, specifically just take a look at the entrance exit on perimeter center west to ensure good um, access.
Okay, I'm going to repeat that back to you just to make sure everybody's heard it. Commissioner Edmondson moved to approve. Uh, and that was SLUP twenty-four oh one pursuant to staff recommendations with the additional uh, look at the entrance exit way there. Did I restate that correctly?
Yep.
All right, we've heard the motion. Is there a second?
One second.
All right, Commissioner Gordon, seconds. Heard a motion and a second at this point. Is there any debate? Is there any discussion on the specific motion? Hearing and seeing none, uh, I think it's appropriate that we vote on this. All in favor of the motion as it's been uh, vocalized, uh, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. Looks like the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. All right, with that said, we will proceed to move on to other business. Is there any other business for our consideration at this time? All right, public comment. Is there any public here who wishes to comment? Seeing none, we'll move forward. At this point, is there any commission comment? All right, well, we're sailing right through this. Uh, seeing none, I, I think it's appropriate that at this time that we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.